Calling to all of the March 16th, 2015 regular meeting of the 35th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Turbrak?
Here.
Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here. First, all of the business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Baker with support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now I see Dick and Brian Carroll is with us, please stand for the invocation.
Oh, good and gracious God, we give you thanks for all the good gifts you give us. We thank you for, we give you hopeful thanks for the coming of spring. We thank you for the graces you gave us to help us be helpful to each other during the floods and the rigors of the winter. And now we ask your blessing on this council meeting. May the discussions be cordial, the decisions wise, and all for the building up of the community here in the city of Berkeley. And let us all say, amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now we come to the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting, when you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
My name is Shirley Hansen. My city is Berkeley, through and through. I come here tonight as one of the co-chairs for the Say Yes to Our Kids bond issue that the school district has on the ballot on May 5th. I just want to make sure that everyone's informed of all of the facts. If you go to the school district's website, which is Berkeley School District's web, there is a link to a whole series of informational items that can help you make your decision. We also have votyesforarkids.org, which is if someone would really like to join us to do this terrific job of raising more money for our children. Our kids are very important, and our theme for the whole campaign is our kids, our community, our future. So, please look into both of these so you can make a wise decision on May 5th and make sure it's yes. Thank you.
My name is John Nicolai, also resident of Berkeley. The reason why I'm here today is in a couple weeks, on March 28th, we'll have the Fourth Annual Mayor's Cup. Those are hockey games between Anderson Middle School and Norwood Middle School. We were originally going to have three games, we might even have four games in that time period, so the number of kids are growing. We have over 100 boys and girls ready to play, and should be a really good time. And we have a lot of people helping out, and kids are excited. I was kind of joking that I wasn't sure if we were going to be able to do it this year, but I had so many sixth and seventh and eighth graders that just came right up to me and just said, "You need to do this," and so we're doing it again. So, it was, it's been a lot of fun so far. We had a lot of help from the city, a lot of help from other parents and other residents, and it should be a good time. We have some new sponsors this year. Berkeley Dad's Club is one, Oakland Junior Grizzlies are another, and it's really keeping the cost down low for our kids to do this. And anyway, I encourage you all to come. It is Mayor's Cup, so I look forward to seeing you there, Mr. Mayor, and other council members, and we'll hopefully be the biggest and the best yet, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
What time is it?
Sorry. On the 28th of March, it is, it starts at 10 o'clock, and what that will be is our little kids, the elementary kids, will be taught by the high schools players, and after that the games will start. All the games will be over with by 4:00 in the afternoon. So, right in the afternoon, that's a great question.
Good job.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the regular 35th City Council meeting on Monday, March 2nd, 2015. Warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1288.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, support by Councilmember Kadekko. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two?
Resolution Number R-0915, matter of approving a resolution authorizing the execution of advanced construction contract between the City of Berkeley and the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT, for the Coolidge resurfacing project, MDOT contract number 14-5651.
Is there a motion to approve R-0915?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker with support by Mayor Protem Turbrak. Mr. Sessa.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, and welcome to residents and visitors to our meeting this day. You know, Council, under this item, I think that this is something that we've been waiting for a long time, and so I'm very glad to finally bring it for your consideration. I know that many residents are there, are anxious to see this project being done. And finally, we're asking the City Council to address a few items that we need to do in order so that we can initiate this project. So, the first item obviously discusses the execution of the advanced construction contract, but the second item is also related to this as well, because this deals with the funding to make sure that we do this correctly. So, these are two, these two items that need to be considered, and obviously, our engineer is here with us this evening, Hubble Rothenclark, Mr. Tom Beal will be the lead person on this, and then also our Director of Public Works, Mr. Derek Schuler is also here with us to also give us a brief overview to the public, to let them know where we are, what we're doing, and give a good summation in terms of this project in its entirety. So, for now, I'd like to ask our Director to come up and give us, again, a summation of where we are and what we're asking the City Council to do this evening. So, thank you and welcome, Mr. Schuler.
Good evening. This is indeed an exciting day as we formalize the resurfacing of Coolidge. This is another step to starting construction. We've been applying for funding for Coolidge for several straight years, and we were fortunate enough to get it in 2016, MDOT 2016, which was a wonderful thing. We were the last project selected for 2016 funding, and we've chosen to go through this advanced construction that MDOT allows, which means that we can build it a full year earlier than 2016, which we are all very anxious to do. So, we are proceeding with the advanced construction contract at this time. Before you tonight is the resolution that will give the mayor and the city manager the authority to sign the advanced construction contract, and that will be the starting point to getting us rolling with MDOT. And they will then approve that document, and then MDOT will actually award the project sometime actually next month, and I'll get into those details in a little bit. But the advanced construction option is the option that we chose, and the project has been designed, and MDOT's actually had a bid letting. Bids were opened last month for the project, and I'll ask HRC to come up in a couple minutes to share the results of that, as well as get into the project details, a little bit about the scope, the timing, I'll talk about a little bit, but also the, what was the last thing I was going to say? Scope, oh, the detouring, traffic control, which is another important piece as we, as we move forward. So, we've received over $400,000 in federal funds for this project. It's a 60-40 split, 60% federal government, 40% local, which would be the City of Berkeley, and that applies to construction dollars only. So, we're paying for, directly for professional services, HRC's work on the job. So, it's a 60-40 split. That applies to the low bid, as well as any extras that would need to be for the project. So, it's a 60-40 split for all construction dollars. That's a very important piece, and I think HRC will talk a little bit about that as well when they come up. So, it's a 60-40 split. The general schedule, MDOT is driving this project, and they are dictating the schedule. So, we are taking the first step tonight. I will hopefully overnight the agreements to MDOT tomorrow. They are very much looking forward to getting copies of those agreements, and then they will be approving the dollar amount, which HRC will touch on a little bit, and then next month, we're looking forward to a project award. So, what does this mean for construction? We're thinking construction starting as early as late April or early May, construction completion July 31st of 2015. So, that July 31st date is set in stone, that's part of the contract. The exact construction date, we don't know yet, and as soon as we know that, you know, we're going to get more information up on the website. We have to have a pre-construction meeting and sort of iron out all those details in a little bit, but as soon as we know that, we're going to get it up on the website so everybody knows the details. As I alluded to, the design is complete. We had the bid opening last month, and bids came in a little bit higher than we expected, and I'll ask HRC if you want to come up and talk a little bit about that, Tom. MDOT bids are, have been coming in quite high. Again, we sort of take a stab at this when we're budgeting, how much is it going to cost? We took a stab. Bids came in about 10%. The low bid was about 10% over what we had estimated the cost to be, but HRC went through the bids, looked at everything, made sure everything was even out. There is no reason to believe that rebidding this project will result in lower bids. In fact, I would presume just the opposite, so we want to move forward at this time. So, Tom, why don't you come up and talk a little bit about the bid opening and the scope?
Sure. As everybody knows, the section of Coolidge north of the Berkeley city limits was done, I believe, 2013 by the Road Commission. It's too bad we couldn't have got our road tied in and done it all at one time, but it just didn't work out that way. We finally got the points last year for 2016 construction. Basically, that section of roads is about a half mile long, it's four lanes. It's between four inches and 12 inches of asphalt over top of concrete that can run anywhere from six to 10 inches of concrete underneath. When we originally did the estimate on the job, we did it based on what we saw on the section of Coolidge that was north of the city. When we actually took cores going into the design, the concrete that's beneath that asphalt is not in great shape, so we basically did bump up the base repairs from 10% of the base to about 25% of the base, because we aren't sure what we're going to get into until we open the job up. I will have my guys come up and just talk a little bit about why we're flopping it from one side of the road to the other to keep traffic off, but I'll get into that in a moment. The plan on this project is to basically do what's known as a mill and overlay, and what that involves is to take a milling machine and mill off the top four and a half inches of asphalt, the entire length. They're going to do one side and then the other, and then we're basically going to do base repairs and put the asphalt back down a new four and a half inches on both sides. There will be base repairs, as I said, and keep in mind, and I know I've said this to you many times before, mill and overlay jobs typically have a service life of seven to 10 years. You can stretch them out to as long as 15 years, but you're going to see some reflective cracking that's going to come through from the concrete down below over the first, the first couple of years. If you drive the section north of the city, you'll see that reflective cracking. It's important to go in and do joint sealing once that occurs to keep the water out, and that'll stretch the road out for a much longer time. So, in terms of figuring longevity, seven to 10 years is the norm. You might stretch it out to 15 if you really pay attention to that cracking, keep that water off the road. And it also depends on Michigan and its wonderful winters and what kind of winter we get. With regard to the bids themselves, we had, we had, I believe-
Five or sixes?
Five, five bidders on this project, and the low bidder was Florence Cement Company. I think Council will probably remember, that's the same company that did the intersection of 12 and Coolidge with the concrete. They do both concrete and asphalt. We had good success with them on the last project. We also have a number of projects that we've worked with on, with this company. They're state pre-qualified and have had success with them on other projects, so I'm very comfortable with this bidder. They were slightly below the others, but not way out of whack in terms of price. Two things, I think, that contributed to the price increase. One, if any of you out there can tell me what's going to happen to oil in the next six to 12 months, that would probably help with regard to bidding these things, but the contractors are scared of it. And secondly, with the amount of roadwork that's being done this year, all the prices seem to be going up some just because of the fact that there's a lot of work out there, the prices are going up. And again, we had to put in a little bit more base repair. We've got it covered, we hope. We could have a little bit more, but if we do, we've got a 60-40 split with the, with the feds if we have to do some additional base repair beyond that. With regard to the traffic maintenance and with regard to how it's going to be flipped, I'd like to have Roland Alex from my office come up and just kind of talk a little bit about how this project's going to proceed, what the approximate start date's going to be, and how we're going to make it work. Roland?
Thank you, Tom. As Derek mentioned, the earliest start of construction would be the end of April. Hopefully, by first week in May, they'd be fully under construction. As Derek also mentioned, the contractual date that the contractor must be finished on is July 31st. We're expecting the project to be completed in two stages. The first stage would be closing both the southbound lanes of Coolidge and having only one, one direction of traffic heading northbound on the two lanes, northbound, and then the second stage would be closing those two northbound lanes, opening traffic up on the new two lanes that were paved southbound and having one-way traffic southbound. We would have proper detouring signs that would route traffic down Webster, Greenfield, and 12 Mile when Coolidge southbound is closed, or 12 Mile to Woodward when northbound Coolidge is closed. It is important to note that the 12 Mile and Coolidge intersection will be open during the entire project, so that's a great thing for the downtown businesses to not have that intersection out of commission. The other important thing that we've done engineering-wise to try to save this base pavement that Tom had mentioned, this, after we've milled off the four and a half inches, there's this concrete pavement that is 40, 50 years old, it's not in the best of shape. We've eliminated vehicular traffic from that lane, so they will milled that surface, they will prepare that surface, make the base repairs, then pave it. During that time, there won't be any traffic on that road, which is why we had the one direction in traffic in two stages. Work hours will be 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. If the contractor needs to work beyond those hours, they would need to come into the city for approval prior to doing that. And then we will have some special signage around the affected roads beginning one month before construction, and we're also planning to provide affected neighbors in the area news of your neighborhood flyers to all area residents and businesses prior to the start of construction, talking about the schedule, the detour routes, on that sort of thing. And then-
Eddie, did you have anything else to add?
Just to cover it pretty much.
Okay. So, Derek, I'll hand it back to you.
So, Council, we'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
And I just, lastly, the MDOT process for this is intense, and there's certainly a lot of red tape involved in this, and we've spent a lot of time, both Jane, myself, and the engineers, figuring out how to tread through these waters. Anytime you're receiving funds like this from the federal government through MDOT, you know, they have certain steps and things that you need to follow, and we're certainly doing our best to follow those, but they dictate the schedule again. The process is dictated by them. They will actually award the job, it's not the City of Berkeley that awards the project. So, we're going to continue to push them and get this thing started just as soon as we can.
Mr. Sessa.
Council, just please know that legal counsel has reviewed the contracts with us, and we've gone through them with, with legal counsel, and I know that they've asked several questions to our DPW director to make sure that we're doing everything in accordance with the law. We're doing our best to make sure that we, we dot all our i's and cross all our t's. I know that that's very important, so please be aware. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Turbrak.
Just a clarification, Mr. Schuler. So, we were awarded this for the 2016 construction season through the advanced construct you mentioned, we can do it a year prior. That is, as long as the city covers the cost in that 2015 year, and then we'll be reimbursed next year.
Very good point. That is correct. Part of the advanced construction agreement is that we, the City of Berkeley, will need to front the full construction dollars, and then we will be reimbursed as early as October of 2015, which is the start of the MDOT's fiscal year. And they have told me, at least verbally, that we could expect to see, once we make our request in October of 2015, a check within about a month's timeframe. So, it doesn't take too long to get that reimbursement check that we'll be very eager to obtain.
Right, and we've already made all the necessary budget coming up in the next item.
I was going to say, we initially have the first $700,000, or $760,000 appropriated in the budget. The Council passed that back in July, and then we'll come back with the balance of a budget amendment next meeting in April.
Mr. Sessa.
Just to clarify, you know, because that's a really good question, the 700 is for the actual project and the 60 is for the engineering.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. The question more for HRC. I noticed you went from 1,600 square yards to 3,500 square yards on your base, based on the condition of the base, but 11 of the 12 core samples were bad. Do you think it's going to be higher than that? It seems to me that we've got a little risk here, it wasn't 25%.
The Oakland County section, they also took some cores, and they had two of their cores were bad and had no base repair. They were fractured, but when they actually removed it, they were able to make the repairs without having to do any base repairs. So, we're anticipating that we're going to get something on the range of 25 to 30% that we're going to have to do those repairs on. Could it be worse? It can, but if we keep the traffic off there, we're pretty comfortable that we can get that done.
Okay, long as we've looked at what's done in the other section on that.
Yeah, I contacted the Road Commission regarding their piece that was done a couple years ago, and they also had some cores showing some deteriorated concrete, but they actually had zero, zero base repairs. Again, we're assuming 25%, but the possibility exists that we may need more, and we won't know until we mill off the surface and get into it, so.
And if it needs more, it needs more, it's got to be done.
That's correct.
Mr. Sessa.
I apologize, Your Honor. You have a question? May I? That is an excellent point, Your Honor, and what we're doing here as part of this resolution is, it also allows me, or the Council authorizes me, that based on the recommendation of our, of our engineer, that if we need more, I will go ahead and proceed with that so that I don't stop or halt any of the progress that we're doing. However, please be assured, I will come back to the City Council as soon as possible at the next meeting date so that we can address this issue and make the proper corrections to our, to our budget so that you will know.
Very good.
Okay.
Councilor Kadekko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schuler, thank you, and HRC, thank you. That July 31st date, of course, is important because a few weeks later, we have a little event going on here in Berkeley. Now, is there a window there because of, you know, you never know Michigan weather, that, the window of July 31st, I mean, what if weather unpredictable, of course, in Berkeley or Michigan?
You know, the weather, the weather is the weather, but, and I think HRC would agree, the, the construction schedule for this project is rather conservative, to say the least.
It's pretty generous when you go one-way traffic. If it was under traffic, I'd be much more concerned, but allowing the contractor to take one side and get the paving done, and this is a mill and overlay, and if you've ever been involved with the mill and overlay projects, typically, they mill it out, then they take a couple days, three, four days to make base repairs. The asphalt just sets up immediately, you're rolling it out, and then they go put the overlay back on. So, this, timing-wise, I think there's some, pretty conservative considering the fact that they'll be able to work without traffic.
That's a point, it's true, yes. Thank you.
Any additional questions for our Director?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I echo our gratitude to you and to our support and everyone for, for help in moving us through this process. I know it has been something that we're all looking forward to for, for quite some time and eager to help move forward. We mentioned the event coming up in August that's there. There is one event that leverages 12 Mile during the potential schedule of construction, and that's the Art Bash in June. And so, I just, I'm sure you guys have thought about it, it's probably in your calendar, but in terms of the signage and the detours, let's just keep that in mind as, in terms of proper flow to make sure everybody's safe and also so we can have a good effective Art Bash.
Absolutely, and we will. We will make sure.
Great, thank you. Thanks again.
Very good. Hearing no further questions, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-0915?
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three?
Motion Number M-1415, matter of amending the budget for the Coolidge resurfacing project from $700,000 to $785,863.50. Further resolved, the City Council directs the Finance Director to bring forward the necessary budget amendment at a future council meeting.
Is there a motion to approve M-1415?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadekko, support by Councilmember Edgar. Mr. Sessa.
Council, I believe that the engineers and our Director has given us sufficient information, but again, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this matter.
Does our Finance Director have anything to say about this?
Mr. Mayor, we should have the budget amendment next council meeting. It's pretty straightforward, and funds are available, it's just a matter of getting the paperwork, catching the paperwork up to the project. Thank you.
Very good, straightforward to know. Mr. Sessa.
Your Honor, to be very honest with you, the Director of Finance was already prepared this evening. He has his work already done.
I have no doubt.
Just, just so that you know, but I just simply asked him to bring it to you at the next meeting, but, but thank you, thank you.
Very good. Any other discussion then on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-1415?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four?
Ordinance Number O-0115, second reading, matter of adopting an ordinance to add Article 13 Valet Parking to Chapter 30 Businesses of the Berkeley City Code to add the city's valet parking rules.
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance O-115?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Edgar with support by Councilmember Kadekko. Mr. Sessa.
Council, I don't know if our City Attorney wishes to address or go over this item with you. I know that he is prepared to do so. This is a second reading. We, again, can address any questions the Council may have. Please know that I did, did contact Vincetta Garage, as, as I mentioned at the last meeting, and I asked them to identify some items of concern. Now, I have had a chance to go over them, the, our City Attorney has given me some, some responses to their questions, and I just haven't had an opportunity to provide them to the City Council. For the most part, and again, the City Attorney can correct me, but I believe that these are, these are very good questions, but, but they're more administrative in nature, and I believe that they can be addressed without making any major changes to our ordinance at this time. I know I'm, I'm talking here without you all seeing them, Council, so I feel a little awkward about this, but I just don't want the Vincetta Garage representatives to think that I'm not considering their questions. We've had a quick review on them, and, and we will, we will address them, but again, I can assure you that we see no problem with your questions and as to how they will affect this ordinance. We believe that they can be addressed administratively and, and that it can work. But again, your honor, I'll turn it over to the city attorney, see if he wishes to address this matter any further.
Well, thank you, your honor. This is a second reading for the proposed ordinance addressing valet parking. I know council at its previous meeting considered some comments from the audience as it related to the scope and purpose of this ordinance. I have, along with my partner, gone through the ordinance, as well as some of the, the recent communications inquiring as to some of the scope of the proposed ordinance. There was one issue, all of the others, as the city manager has indicated, I believe, are, are really administrative. There was one policy issue that council could take under advisement, perhaps, and, and see how the, the process of the ordinance plays out over, over a period of time, but it went to the issue of a, of the draft not having any type of built-in three-strike provision, which some adjoining communities have, where if there's a first violation, it's a ticket; if there's a second violation, it's a heightened fine schedule, and then perhaps after a third, the, the valet permit would be revoked. My partner, you know, in looking at that, felt that that is something perhaps for council to be sensitive and look at over a period of time, but, but on balance, didn't think that there needed to be any type of adjustment or amendment to the, to the draft before you this evening.
Are there questions for our attorney? Are there comments from the audience?
My name is Kurt Cotello. My partner and I own Vincetta Garage at 27799 Woodward Avenue. We own the parking lot at 1010 Eaton Avenue. We own the home at 1045, 1046 Eaton Avenue. We own the home at 960 Oxford, the home at 972 Oxford, the home at 984 Oxford, and the home at 996 Oxford. I'm here today to really speak about the valet parking ordinance. I don't want to take up a lot of your time because I'm, I've appeared before the council and the planning commission the last two years, and I've been lectured many times by the council and the residents of Eaton and Oxford about the Berkeley Way, and I understand the Berkeley Way. You've made that very clear. I think that my issue with this is that I need to know what you're looking for as far as the end game with Vincetta Garage and the parking, as far as valet is concerned, when it has to do with the right-of-way. I think if you look at the way the ordinance is written, using public right-of-way for any staging of any sort of vehicles that are coming in for valet parking is off the table, and that's different, as I understand it, from other communities. If you go to Royal Oak, you could pull up to a restaurant, and there would be metered parking spaces that are then dedicated for staging for valet parking operations. We know that because our operators have been doing business in Royal Oak for the last 19 years. If you go to a city like Birmingham, you might see outside of a restaurant staging for valet parking, and you might actually be able to eat dinner in a public right-of-way outside of a restaurant. Birmingham has a program where they actually give parking spots to restaurants to actually serve people. We're not asking for any of that. What we're asking for is a continuation of the operation that we've had in place the last two years at council's request, because we believe that it's our best way of organizing the way our patrons park on the properties that we've contracted and the properties that we own. I really believe that if we have, if we lose valet parking, I think that we will not be able to control the way cars are parked on Eaton and Oxford, and as I understand the needs of the residents, I think that's one of the big concerns. Obviously, I was, I misread the community when it came to the master plan. That master plan was written in 2007, and it was ignored in 2014. I'm worried that this ordinance is gonna be passed tonight and enforced tomorrow morning, and slowly but surely, we will lose our ability to provide valet parking. I really think that if this is an instance where the residents have had issues with the way valet parking is happening in the neighborhoods, it would be news to us. We haven't heard anything in terms of valet parking where the cars are parked, I'd say, since we implemented it. I would hate to lose valet parking, just because an ordinance appeared that made valet parking prohibitive for us to provide to our customers. Again, as you know, it's a $54,000 expense, but we think it's worth it to allow us to really dictate the way cars are parked and the lots that we've built, the lots that we own and the lots that we contract to, to make this more easy for the community. I think this might be a rare case where the puppeteers could be tangled in the strings of their marionettes if this passes, and I would hate to see that happen because I do believe that it will create greater tension around the parking issues around Vincetta Garage. That being said, I absolutely understand that it's an ordinance that goes through, and like every other ordinance that has come our way, we'll do our best to try to adhere to the provisions. We just want to know what the end game is. You know, at first, I thought that the coconut was being squeezed because you wanted water. Then I thought the coconut was being squeezed because you wanted the meat. Now I think the coconut's just being squeezed because you don't like coconuts, and we have no choice but to stay where we are. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other, Mr. Attorney?
Mayor, just in response to the comments that were made to council, the, you know, should council decide to adopt, obviously, the council knows that it's not effective for 30 days, so it would be 30 days prior to the effective date of the ordinance going into, into place. And the other issue that was, was raised as, as to the, the right-of-way, the public right-of-way, and, and this ordinance merely provides a regulatory scheme for somebody who wishes to engage in valet parking with a permit, either annual or daily, to be able to do that, in compliance with the conditions outlined in the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. So, in other words, it is wholly incorrect to talk about losing one's valet on the basis of this?
Well, I wouldn't characterize it that way.
Of course. Any other thoughts on this matter? Well, then, seeing no one else wishing to weigh in, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on Ordinance O-115?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kiddekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five?
Motion Number M-1515, matter of authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Kelly Lawn Service to service the city's grass and weed-cutting contractor.
Is it a motion to approve M-1515?
Motion to approve M-1515.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kiddekel. Mr. Sess.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, this contract appears before you at least once a year. I'll ask our city planner to come up and give you a summation as to what this contract is all about. And also, please know that as always, our legal counsel has reviewed it. Thank you. Ms. Vanson?
About every three years.
Every three years?
Every three years. We can do it every year as our option, but if, but if, but if we think that it's mutually beneficial, then we, we can extend the contract two more years. Kelly Lawn Service was our last provider for the last three years, and he was our sole bidder, despite what I would say is pretty rigorous. We, we sent out bid packages or invitations to bid to various lawn service companies in the area, and did advertise it as well, and Kelly Lawn Service, who we've been very pleased with, was our sole bidder, and he had a very, very, very modest increase in price, and so we are recommending it. This, this contractor will provide the city for those nuisance grass cuts when folks, for whatever reason, haven't mowed their lawn or haven't trimmed the weeds to the lawful height. We have a contractor that does that, and this cost gets passed on, along with an administrative fee, to the property owner.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Vanson? Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-1515?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kiddekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrach?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six?
Resolution Number R-1015, matter of adopting the Oakland County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Is it a motion to approve R-1015?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilor Blanchard, with support by Councilmember Edgar. Mr. Sess.
Council, I'm very proud to bring this, for your attention. I know that many council members here are very interested in making sure that we have a good emergency operating plan. I know we're still working on that, to make sure that that's being done, and, but one of the other important things that we must comply as well is this hazard mitigation plan, and I know that this, this plan had been prepared by Oakland County for many years, many years ago. And with us this evening to explain this plan, I've asked Michael Pousak from Homeland Security to give us a brief overview of the purpose of this plan, why it's important, and, and why we should approve this, this resolution. Now, one of the key reasons this is so important is that, well, number one, this will make sure that we comply with FEMA regulations, which require us to adopt a hazard mitigation plan, and by doing so, we're, we're eligible to seek funding relief for damages caused by natural disasters. Now, please know that we have met with Oakland County in the preparation of this, of this item, but respectfully, for whatever reason, I, I think Chief Eshman said it best this, this afternoon. We've been to the table, we're there. Unfortunately, this resolution was a simple oversight, and it needs, it needs a yes from us. So, definitely, we do recommend that from the city council. Again, I'll ask Mr. Pousak to give us a brief summary of what this document is, is all about and why it's important for us to do, and then I know that I have Chief Eshman with us as well to answer any questions that you may have. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pousak. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Mike Pousak. I'm from the Homeland Security Division of Oakland County. As the city manager explained, this is a hazardous mitigation plan, which was developed, actually updated in 2012. Every CVT in, in Oakland County, cities, townships, and villages, came to the table to identify the hazards that are specific to their community. Berkeley was no different. We had the city manager, your Director of Public Safety, Director of Public Works, and a couple of other staff personnel that came, identified their hazards for the city, and we also identified mitigation strategies to deal with those hazards. And, again, it's been documented, the plan has been adopted by, well, just about every community in the, in Oakland County. I think there's maybe two more left that we're still working on. There's no obligation whatsoever to the city. It's just a document that you have on hand, you have identified your hazards, and you identified how you're gonna mitigate those hazards, and you have a plan. So, cities don't have to develop each, spend time, money, and resources to develop their own plan, the Oakland County Homeland Security has a plan.
Very good. Any questions? Councilor Blanchard?
Thank you, your honor. I'll start out with, the first one is Project 3C. It's telling us that we have to adopt the hazardous mitigation strategies for this Berkeley school district. I'm trying to figure out why, why that is. Don't, don't they have to do their own, or does that come under the communities?
That comes under the community, yes, sir. As a matter of fact, many, many school districts are identified in our mitigation plan, absolutely.
Our school district covers three communities, so they have to be adopted by all three communities?
No, sir. If they're under the Berkeley School District, it's, it's covered under that.
But some of the hazards are in other, in other communities?
That's fine, and they're still covered.
Okay. What do we need to do to document the fact that we have completed the strategies in the 2005? I see we have one open in 2005, and I see we have some open from 2012. For the people that don't know, this is a 334-page document without the annexes, which we have never been able to get a hold of, so we haven't seen any of the annexes or appendixes yet, and that probably makes it about that thick, but I've read the 334 pages. Isn't it required that the city has to find some kind of tracking device to track their ongoing mitigation strategies?
No, that's incorrect, sir. That document is made public. It's on our website, it's available anytime.
I know yours is. I thought about how, how do we document or get, keep factual records of what's done to mitigate our strategies?
That's done internally, sir, however you want to do that.
Well, my point is, wouldn't that be the easiest way for us to develop a small hazard mitigation plan to show mitigation of our own strategies?
And that's been done through this plan, absolutely, yes, sir. There's nothing wrong with identifying, there'll be the same hazards that you've identified in our plan, absolutely.
Oh, there, well, there may be more, because that was four years ago.
And that's fine. And the plan is updated approximately every five years.
Right.
Matter of fact, we seek a, a grant through the state of Michigan to, to do that plan, which we, again, will incorporate all the cities, townships, and villages to, because some mitigation, some hazards have been mitigated, and we're identifying new hazards, so that's why we want to update it every five years.
Okay, and, and looking at this, I spent quite a bit of time on it. I did meet with the school district, talked to them, went over their hazards, and have compiled a list of all of the hazards and all the mitigation strategies for all of these, including the school districts. So, I'm gonna bring that to the city sometime soon, through the public safety, to, as a method, method of tracking our mitigation strategy so that we're on top of those.
And your public safety department's been proactive in that. There's no question about it. And again, when we, we get ready to update this plan, probably within the next couple of years, bring those hazards, those identified hazards and mitigation strategies with you, absolutely.
We will do that, your honor.
Got them right there.
That's fine. We will bring it, we will bring that with, with us. Thank you.
See, these, these were in our operations plan, but they were taken out. That's why, that's, that was my concern. Our mitigation strategy, we put in our emergency operations plan, but they were removed, and emergency operations plan is not finalized yet, so I guess the question is whether they go back in there or they go to separate plans, another.
Well, it's a, it's a living, breathing document, which, you know?
They all are.
Absolutely, and they have to change, so you're on top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, Councilor Baker?
Thank you, your honor. Thanks to my colleague for his additional questions there, and thank you for your time here tonight in helping us ensure that we are aware of and help support these kinds of initiatives. I have two kinds of questions, first in terms of coverage of the plan for any training requirements, whether for our staff or personnel or folks like us, to ensure that we know what we need to do. Does the, so I didn't read all 334 pages, I read about a quarter of it, quite honestly. To what extent does this talk about any training or qualifications and certifications that we or any of our staff would need to do so that we are confident in executing the plan? Does it speak to that, or is it something each community does on their own?
Each community does that on their own.
Okay, so that could be part of our additional planning that we would want to do above and beyond. Also, to the extent to which every so often, and hopefully this never happens for anybody, but an incident happens entirely within a community, and they would exercise their plan as appropriate, for more of the nature-driven kinds of events, they tend to, they don't really know the difference between zip codes and geographical, you know, geopolitical boundaries, to what extent does the plan encourage or enable communities to collaborate with one another and ensure that they are working together to expedite recovery and, and those types of things? Can you speak to the, the cooperation that this enables?
Well, obviously, the, the cities and, and other jurisdictions in the county come together to formalize these plans, and what's been done, I know, has already been done, is working with your surrounding communities about what's, what we can share, what we can do, and the resources that we can offer. Obviously, Oakland County is always there and will always be there as a, as a resource to help out, whatever the need may be. But your surrounding communities also, and we, as you found out probably during this flooding event.
Indeed.
It's just huge. Your, your staff, your, your city manager and your staff did an outstanding job, and it was a pleasure working with them, so.
Thanks. One, one last question that I have at the moment, anyway. So, practice makes perfect, and I'm a big fan of knowing what to do and getting, rehearsing it, as you will, so that if and when those needs do arise, we're able to do so. So, to what extent could you share any stories or ideas around other communities that have worked together in sort of practices or drills, or, or some kind of way to proactively, you know, gather the community together to, to simulate, whether it's a tabletop exercise or an actual community gathering, to, to simulate one of the responses to a, to a mock disaster? Could you share any insights on that?
Well, some communities I know have a CERT team, civilian emergency response team members. I don't know what Berkeley does specifically, but there might be in surrounding communities, and some residents of Berkeley might be a part of that. They, once in a while, we, we conduct full-scale exercises involving them, uh, every, maybe annually at the mo, at the least. Um, but, again, we offer National Weather Service Officer, offers classes in weather spotting. As a matter of fact, they're doing that now. Um, there's also, um, available for, for community leaders. Well, as a matter of fact, we just had a, um, after-action report regarding the flood. We encourage, not only, not only the affected communities, but other surrounding communities to come in, listen to this, join in the conversation, what went wrong, what went right, so that we can be better prepared the next time this happens.
That's excellent. I certainly like to learn from the history, or else we're doomed to repeat it, as they say. Uh, to, I'll, I'll certainly support this tonight. I do believe that this is a, this is a necessary step forward. I don't believe it's sufficient, though, and I think some of the kinds of, uh, additional ideas that we've, we've talked about here might help us, uh, go, you know, certainly embrace this and, uh, remain good partners with the county and with our neighbors, uh, and see what other things we can do to, to make sure that all of our residents and businesses, uh, and our staff have the, the safety and the confidence to move forward, so. So, thank you again for, for tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Sess.
Uh, you know, Your Honor, we're very fortunate where we live in that there are not a lot of natural disasters that occur in our area. Um, it, it's been a long time since, uh, since I've had to work on Hurricane Alley, where we actually do training, and we do annual, uh, events where we should go out there and, and simulate what would happen if, if a hurricane or a natural disaster occurred. But as was said this evening, um, we do come together, uh, the cities, and we do talk about, uh, what, uh, what we're going to do in the, in the event of an emergency, so there are meetings such as that. I know that we train our staff as well, and they, they're able to have some exposure to some areas where, where we may not foresee here, not just for natural disaster, but for other things that, that could potentially occur in our, in our community. And our officers have been, have been excellent receiving that training. Uh, but you're absolutely right. Uh, one of the things that I learned, uh, during a, uh, natural disaster is to expect the unexpected, and that's something that you always have to prepare yourself for. So, I'm, again, uh, coming from, having some of that background in the past for myself, uh, I work with the staff to make sure that they get, at least get the training, get some exposure, and, uh, I know that I've spoken in the past to see if there could be some type of drill, um, but again, we have such few, uh, type of natural disasters in our area. Uh, but perhaps that's something in, in the future that we may wanna look at. I know that this, this flood event, which we're hoping would never happen again, um, it, it did, it, we did learn from it, and, uh, I know that, uh, uh, as a member of SACRA, we've come together several times to find ways as to how we can better address, say, for example, the, the need for, uh, for garbage trucks, how are we gonna handle that? Public Safety did an excellent job, so did Public Works. I think they went above, above and beyond, uh, some of the requests. And, uh, so just please, please be aware, and, and I want the public to be aware, that we're constantly training, learning, and educating, and perhaps maybe in the future some, sometime, we may wanna do some sort of a, of a, of a mock emergency situation. I don't know if our, our Public Safety Director wishes to say anything? No? Okay.
I think it's all been said.
Okay, very good.
Clear where we're going with this.
Yes. Thank you.
Very good.
Just a quick comment, Your Honor. If those of you that are watching TV last week saw a fuel truck burn on I-94. Quite a disastrous event. That could happen here. In fact, it did happen along GoShurley, you remember? It was on the corner of, of 12 Mile and Southfield.
In the seventies, and it was 12 Mile and Southfield.
Well, yeah. And the same type of thing happened there. So it can happen, we just have to be trained for it, we have to be ready to respond for it, we have to have all, all the stuff in place.
Uh, thank you.
One last, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a, a comment or response, please?
That issue, something did happen here a couple of years ago. It actually was in Oak Park, it was at the corner.
Yes.
Eleven and Greenfield.
Yes, I remember that one.
Situation.
Yep.
And that's what this is about. It doesn't have to be large-scale.
Right, exactly. Um, if I may, thank you. Um, I thank you for that additional insights, and I, I have every confidence that our staff is exceptionally trained and well-qualified, and what I like about where this conversation is headed is the extent to which we can activate and engage the residents and business owners as well. A simple plan that even just understood our voting precincts and, and sought volunteers in each of those precincts to kind of help serve as like local area representatives, or, or some kind of a thing to do some, you know, different simulations, even twice a year, or quarterly, or something to, to, uh, understand what we would do if. So if, uh, if it was in the, the winter that we just had, think how cold February was. What if, you know, uh, we had had a, an extended power outage, right? How would we come together as a community to help one another? Right? And I have every confidence that we would do so fabulously, uh, but to do, to think about that ahead of time just gives us that extra confidence. And I think that's, that's where we could go with this kind of thing, again, building upon this excellent foundation, uh, and engaging the, the community to help us move forward together.
Your Honor, that's, that is an excellent point. You know, one of the things that we take for granted in, in our, in our city, in our state, is that we don't have as many natural disasters in, in some areas. But Oakland County has prepared, uh, some, uh, brochures. And you'll see them outside, um, in, in our, in our, uh, in our areas where people can pick up, what, what do you need to have in the event of a, of a hurricane, or a tornado? Uh, what do you do in the event, uh, uh, you have a flood? This information is already available to us, uh, by Oakland County, and we, we posted it for a little while on our website, and I'm gonna go back and, and do that again. But there are brochures outside that people can prepare. I mean, uh, li, living in, in southeastern Texas, uh, I did not go anywhere without making sure that I had my, my packet-ready, emergency packet in case of, of an event. So we had, you know, I had, I had flares, I had water, I had blanket, you know, extra batteries, uh, make sure my cellphone was charged, uh, all, all those kinds of things that we take for granted, um, not living in that, in that type of environment. So there, there are brochures already available to our public, so if they want to know, what, what do I do in the event of, of an emergency, that information is, is there for them. And they can go to Oakland County, they did an excellent job in having that data available, so we, we do have some, some of that information ready. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else to be said about this topic? Um, it's an interesting conversation that we're having, but it is part of a larger national conversation. I mean, at the National League of Cities Conference this year, it was the main theme of preparing for all kinds of eventualities that can happen in a community. And, um, I know that Lieutenant Crum and Councilmember Blanchard, Darrell Shell, and a variety of others in our administration have been working on this and, uh, keeping us current. We thank you, Mike, for coming with us and sharing, uh, that information with us as well. I think it's useful for our residents to, uh, be aware of what the county is doing and how we're working in conjunction with the county.
I understand. Just one last thing. If any of you personally have any questions or wanna contact me, please do, and we can work out, uh, maybe some training stuff that's coming through, maybe that's something that we haven't thought about that you'd be interested in doing, and, and maybe that would benefit others, so.
We wanna have a 402 class for our council and our directors.
I know they've done that in the past, and I'll have to ask my supervisor about that.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-1015?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kiddeckel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven?
Motion Number M-1615, matter of awarding the structural firefighting replacement protective clothing purchase to First One Fire Supply, 207 East Cliff Suite A, Ma, Mason, Michigan, 48854, at a cost not to exceed $27,550, from the Uniforms Cleaning and Purchasing Account Number 101310744000.
Is it a motion to approve M-1615?
Motion to approve M-1615.
Motion approved by Councilmember Blanchard, support by Councilmember Kiddeckel. Mr. Sess.
Counsel, I'd like to turn it over to Public Safety right now. I believe Chief Eshman will, will give you a summary as to what this, uh, what we're requesting, uh, for you tonight, but, uh, but I'm very pleased to report that this is something that was budgeted, and so funds are available. With that, Chief Eshman?
Yes. Uh, we did anticipate the needs here and the, uh, current budget, and we did budget in, uh, $27,550 for the replacements of, uh, various sworn officers and volunteer firefighters. Their turnout gear, the, uh, pants, coats, that they wear, uh, the boots, uh, gloves, helmets, hoods, that sort of thing, has to be replaced regularly. Um, expiration due to, uh, age, as well as condition, has to be accommodated. We need to do this in order to remain compliant with a standard set by the National Fire Protection Association. More importantly, replacing old equipment will afford our firefighters the safety that they deserve, and that they need when they're, uh, on scene. In anticipation of this, Lieutenant Crum put out a request for proposal on February 1st. We only had one vendor bid, uh, and there's been a mistake, I don't know if that's been corrected, and it is not first "one" fire supply, it's first "due" fire supply. Uh, it was handwritten, and, uh, "due" became "one," so sorry for that. But we, uh, we did check, Lieutenant Crum did check with other suppliers just to make sure, as we only received the one bid, that we were in line, uh, with pricing out there, and we were. So what we're going to do is, is replace 10 sets of gear, basically, uh, pants and coats, to, uh, three reserve officers and seven sworn officers. Actually, 12 helmets, five volunteer reserve officers and seven sworn officers. The fronts of helmet, the shield, that sort of thing comes with it. And 13 pairs of boots. Now, uniquely, we had a choice in the boots, for instance, between the current standard of rubber boot and what is coming down the road in a leather boot, which provides more security for the ankle. Uh, resulting, the rubber boots can result in more frequent ankle injuries, knee and back sometimes affected because of the ankle giving way. So we're moving towards the new leather boot. However, that came in at a price of $355 a pair. Uh, just today, I learned that they may have another option at $269 a pair, so we may be able to get out in front of the chronological list of those that need to be replaced. But anyway, we will explore that, it just came up this afternoon, so we'll be exploring that. So the number that we're spending may come down a little bit, uh, the overall amount. So, other than that, Mike, do you have any?
Okay. Any questions?
He just doesn't wanna get up there and talk, I know.
There's no cameras here tonight.
Councilmember Kiddeckel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions, and thank you, Chief, and Lieutenant Crum. Um, number one, this company, do they do it for most of the communities around here?
Yes, and they've been doing it for us. They're in Mason, Michigan, up near Lansing, and we have used them in the past.
And the other question is, and I don't even know if it's possible, this old equipment, can any of it be donated to anyone else?
You wouldn't really want to give, uh, outdated, uh, time-expired, or defective equipment to anyone else. Now, it can be useful for practice, it can be useful for other things, but on a fireground, you can't have it.
Okay. Do they ever offer you an exchange, like money?
No.
Okay, thank you.
But it could be donated to the poor?
Well, that's where I was getting at.
Well.
I mean, if, for walking that isn't in, involved in, in firefighting or so on.
Yes, exactly. We will explore that.
Yes.
Not to any fire.
No, that's correct, yes.
Right. Right, you're absolutely right. We did look at that, and, uh, the concern that it could be defective and someone were to get hurt, that, that, that was the concern. For example, um, I know an issue was whether or not, um, people can use it to climb, say, a ladder of some sort, and if they slipped, uh, again, I don't know, I'll have to talk to legal counsel on that, see what kind of direction they could give. But, uh, but one of the, one of the ways that we thought perhaps might be useful is, uh, maybe allow Public Works to use it if they're out there, you know, walking, you know, on, on water, or something like that, perhaps. Chief Eshman?
Well, the boots pose a, a greater risk than would the suits, the turnout gear, which is, you know, watery repellent, and blah, blah, blah. And the boots, however, once they're structurally gone, you don't want people climbing ladders or going into, you know, digs, uh, down into, you know, when they do water mains and stuff, we wouldn't want that part.
You're right, you're right, that's right. All right.
Very good. Councilmember Baker?
Uh, thank you, I appreciate that question, uh, Your Honor, 'cause that was actually, what I was gonna ask was the proper disposal of this stuff, rather than donating or trying to get a thing, 'cause I know, um, as you mentioned, some of the equipment has expiration dates. Uh, I know in the, um, the energy sector, those that have the hard hats and stuff, they're actually required to turn them in for proper, um, disposal, um, because of the, the, the risk, uh, and.
Ours go to the museum.
Yeah, we'll take them in the museum, yeah. Now that, I think we can accommodate. Um, but I, I appreciate the, the thought process around that, 'cause the last thing I'd want is anybody thinking that they're safe going in with equipment that's outdated or worn, so I'd actually encourage, to whatever extent we can, to find proper disposal so that it's not misused, and put somebody with a false sense of confidence, so. So, thank you for that. And the museum will take it.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, I'd just like to thank Public Safety. I know that if you were to see Lieutenant Crum's spreadsheet, he has every piece of equipment by expiration date by person. He knows what goes out, out of, but, he's put a tremendous amount of time in that, and this is something that, that they intend to bring back every year. Because rather than going for 10 sets, we're probably gonna have two next year, and maybe one, you know, well, you know exactly how many. But there, there will be some expiring every year, and rather than waiting to get a bunch expired into it, we'd like to rotate this through and make sure that everybody has current gear all the time.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Singing on, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-1615?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kiddeckel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting. Ms. Boucher, who's up first?
Councilmember Kiddeckel.
Kiddeckel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I just wanted to say that I was able to attend the Cartoon, uh, Network event at the Community Center a couple of weeks ago. There were about 40 people there. I don't know how many little kids really watched it, they were running around, but everyone had a great time. And I wanna thank the Parks and Rec Department for that. Again, I wanna mention that a week from tonight, at 7:00, at Farina's Banquet Center, we're having Justice, Michigan Supreme Court Justice, Richard Bernstein, he's gonna be speaking on overcoming challenges, you can do it. It's sponsored by the Berkeley Lions Club, Farina's Banquet Center, and Sham Bam Eye Specialist. I spoke with, uh, Justice Bernstein's office today, and they're really excited that they're coming to Berkeley. If you get a chance, look in the South Oakland Eccentric, uh, there's an article about it in yesterday's paper, and I look forward to that and hope to see everyone there. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Redgar?
Um, I'd like to say how wonderful it is to see spring finally showing its lovely head in some sunshine. Um, wanna wish everyone a Happy St. Patrick's Day tomorrow. Um, little, couple notes on the Tree Committee. They plan to meet with plans for Arbor Day planting and the Fall 205 Tree Planting Project, so stay tuned for that. And the Planning Commission had an excellent work session on March 10th with a presentation, um, from LSL Planning regarding the Residential Form Based Code, was wonderful. Um, it's great to see construction beginning early on Coolidge. Keep checking the website for details on that, just Berkeley keeps moving forward, it's a wonderful thing.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Terbrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a few things coming up, again, in the Parks and Recreation Department. As my colleague mentioned, the Parks and Recreation Department continue to, uh, put on great events and, and great programs for the residents. events and great programs for the residents. March 28th, as we heard earlier today from Mr. John Nicolai, is a very busy day in the community. Begins with Breakfast with the Bunny. We have two sessions offered for Breakfast with the Bunny from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. or 10:30 to 11:30 a.m. $4 a ticket. They are on sale now. And the great thing about Breakfast with the Bunny is that you're very close to the ice arena, so you can just head right on over to the Mayor's Cup right after you have Breakfast with the Bunny. So you can have Breakfast with the Bunny, lunch at the Mayor's Cup, and you can make a nice day of it there. Additionally, coming up before our next council meeting, a very important event on April 6th. It is going to be in downtown Detroit, however. That's opening day. I'm sure you're all very well aware of that. At one point, there was a council meeting scheduled that day, but I'm not sure if that is going to be the case. And Spring Break Vacation Camp begins the next day, Tuesday, April 7th through Friday, April 10th. Again, that is Spring Break Vacation Camp already coming up. Daily field trips, and the cost for camp varies depending on the amount of days attending. And keep listening to Communications for more great news happening in the Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of quick things. Hello again, everybody. The city's Downtown Development Authority, DDA, their board met last week's Wednesday, and as part of the budgetary process, they have a budget committee that reviews the proposed projects for the coming fiscal year. That budget was presented to the full board, and it was passed with their full support. I believe it's a sensible budget for the upcoming cycle. I'm very pleased with that. I know the board is very appreciative of our finance director, Mr. Sabuda's support and all the hard work that he and the team put into that. So thank you for all of that great work. And I certainly encourage them to continue to outreach to the businesses and residents for future projects. The way the funding works, they will have opportunities to engage in meaningful projects, even broader projects in coming fiscal years. And as we know, those projects don't just happen overnight. It takes a lot of time, a lot of planning, preparation, and those types of things, and outreach to ensure that those projects are well thoughtful, are well thought out, well designed, and meet the needs and help move the city forward. Now's the time to do that stuff. Now is the time to have those conversations and to begin that planning and applying for grants and those types of things and get the paperwork process started for those upcoming cycles. And they're aware of that, and they're doing good things to keep that stuff moving. Speaking of good things, there's a fundraiser event coming to Berkeley's Hartfield Lanes Bowling Center. It's called Bowl for Kids' Sake, and is to benefit the big brothers and big sisters of Metro Detroit. The event was held here in Berkeley a couple of years ago, and it was the best fundraising event that they had had to date, over $30,000 in that single event there. We, as a city, fielded two teams to help compete in that, and I'm hoping we can meet or exceed that again this year as we find ways to help support them. It's back here in Berkeley. As I mentioned, it's a 50s theme this time, as you so choose to get into the spirit and have a costume or matching outfits or something like that for your bowling teams, that would be fun. Not required, but if you choose to do that, that would be awesome. It's hosted by DTE and Strategic Staffing Solutions, and so I'd like to encourage everybody to come out to that. As far as final quote for tonight, I'd like to quote Abraham Lincoln. He once said, "You cannot escape the responsibility of tomorrow by evading it today." You cannot escape the responsibility of tomorrow by evading it today. And we, as a city, are taking a step forward today to help ensure our responsibility, and it has to do with our roads, right? We talked about Coolidge. As you know, our crumbling roads and bridges across the state are only getting worse. We mentioned last time, the average motorist licensed driver pays $357 a year in car repairs. And so if you're one of those lucky that haven't had that opportunity to repair, there's someone else that is making up your share of that. So it's due to the roads that we have, and one third, up to one-third of the fatal car accidents have a road condition aspect to that. And so as we think about this harsh winter here and the freeze thaw cycle and all that stuff, it's something for us all to consider. We're really glad of what we're doing with this little stretch of Coolidge, and hopefully we'll be able to help think more about our roads, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stedman?
Good evening, everybody. First of all, I think, I know I've announced this before, but the library has a couple of programs coming up at the end of March. The first one is Monday, March 23rd at 6:30, and that one is Drying Up Your Homes Wet Basement by Ron Gay, who is a wet basement consultant and an author. And the second one is Tuesday, March 24th, also at 6:30, and it's Selma and the Voting Rights. And the library does continue to pack their programs, so register early if you'd like to attend any of them. They just had a second Sears program. They had one last fall, and then they had another one in February, and they had another 63 people register for that one. So people are really, he's really finding some wonderful programs. The Beautification Committee, they're involved in a Coolidge median project. Doug Deeds, who's in the audience, is busy working with some Angel School fourth graders, right?
Yes.
Fourth graders.
Norv.
And, pardon me?
Norv Anderson.
Oh.
Also, yeah, also.
Okay. And Norv and, okay. And they're planting seedlings and are going to be involved in the planning of the flowers along Coolidge. Hopefully, the construction won't get in the way of the flowers too much. And that's all I have tonight. Everybody have a wonderful, safe St. Patrick's Day.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. One thing in the Chamber of Commerce, they are working on a Slip Into Spring Ladies' Night Out on March 26th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:30 in some of the local restaurants and shops, so the ladies can get out and spend their money. So boost our businesses. Another thing, I echo what my colleague, Ms. Stedman, says is, "St. Patrick's Day be safe." There's a lot of people out there that are imbibing a little. Watch out for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sessom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'd like to remind members of the public and, of course, our residents that if you'd like to stay in tune with everything that's being discussed here, yes, please do visit our website at www.berkleymich.org. But I also strongly encourage you to download our mobile app because the mobile app will send direct messages to your phone as it relates to any construction items that's coming up. That's going to be so important, or any kind of emergencies that we may have, that is one way that we can communicate with our residents. So please, utilize our mobile app. It's so important. And for directions on how to do that, go to our website again. It'll provide you with some information, or you can go to the App Store, and again, it'll give you some data. One of the things that I'll make sure that we do provide more information to our residents is this Mayor's Cup that's coming up. It's so important, so we'll make sure that we do a little bit better job in promoting that. That's going to be a lot of fun, and of course, it's very, very important. Let's see, the other thing that I want to make sure that we do discuss, and something I'm very, very proud of letting our city know. You know, I've been looking at some of the various changes that are happening in our Parks Department, and we want, I want to make sure that our Parks Department provides the best services that we possibly can. I know this evening, you've heard on some of the events that they're doing. I had at one time considered perhaps looking at a public service model, but I think that for now, I'm just simply going to allow it to continue as is and just have a director of Parks and Recreation, and we'll move forward with that. So I think for now, I think that's the best way to address this. They're doing a great job, and we'll continue with that model. So please know that. And then lastly, one thing that I have failed to do, and I have to apologize to our finance staff and to the directors. I'm very pleased to inform the City Council that we, again, did receive the Budgetary Presentation Award for the City of Berkeley. That is a great honor to have, Council. I think we've had it for at least five, six years now. Mr. Sabuda, how many years would you say?
This is eight.
Eight, oh my. So we are eight years, and that is a wonderful award. It is not easy to get, and I'm very proud of that. So I hope our residents are proud of us as well. So congratulations to our Director of Finance and the staff and everyone who is responsible for putting this together. So congratulations, Mr. Sabuda. Thank you for your hard work. And with that, City Council, happy St. Patrick's Day to everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. One more thing. You forgot.
I'm forgetting.
You forgot. It's Councilman Terbrecht's 100th birthday that's coming up.
It's not 100, but it's a milestone.
Your birthday's way before mine. What are you talking about?
I forgot to mention yours.
You're a lot closer to 100, too.
So I know that it's coming up in April, so I know that Councilman Kadakko, he knows everyone's B-Day, and he failed to mention it. So happy birthday, Councilman. And I hate to tell you this, but April 6th, we're still holding our council meeting, so...
Fine, but March 28th is his birthday. That's the Mayor's Cup Day, so we'll have a celebration there. I want to make sure everyone's aware.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sabuda?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to take the opportunity to wish everyone a very safe and happy St. Patrick's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crist?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Well, thank you. First of all, the Mayor's Cup on the 28th. It's a wonderful event and a great opportunity for all the youngsters to show their talent. And I notice every year, the coaches from the high school are there with keen eye on promising talent. And so we hope that the youngsters perform to the best of their ability, show their skills very well. I'd like to thank John Nicolai and his team for all of the effort and all of the work they put into that event. Our volunteers make an amazing difference in this city, and we would not have the kind of city we have without those volunteers. They, we have about 20 different boards and commissions that people donate their time, their talent, their energy to making our city great. And in recent years, we have not had the opportunity to kind of honor that and to salute their volunteerism as a group. And so in recognition of their sacrifice, and in conjunction with National Volunteer Week, the City Council here has sent out personal invitations to all of the members of these boards and commissions to attend a special appreciation ceremony at Farina's. It's going to be on April 15th, 6:30 to 8:30. For purposes of transparency, the majority of the funds for that event have been donated by members of the City Council. Our city is the beneficiary of the tireless efforts of these volunteers, and we surely value their contribution, their energy to our city. And this is just one little way that we can honor them as a group. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Blanchard and Councilmember Kadakko, who have been working on that over the period of the last several weeks to make that happen. Councilmember Baker talked about bowling for kids. Didn't tell us the date.